Okay, I'd like to call the order to the City of Camarillo Planning Commission, a regular meeting of Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And Mr. Secretary, could you take role, please?
Commissioner Vandermeulen.
President.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Vice Chair Lamone.
Here.
And Chair Edsall.
Here.
Okay, then if we'll stand for the flag salute, Mr. Commissioner Murphy's gonna leave it.
Could everyone please rise, hand over your hearts? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on tonight's agenda is consent calendar, and that consists of the minutes on the capital improvement program. Is there any discussion on that, or get a motion to?
Can we do the minutes all at once, or since the various peo- various commissioners were here for the two different meetings, do we need to approve those separately?
Counsel, I think we can do them all at once, can't we?
The commission can handle all the minutes at the same time, as long as the record's clear as to who's voting on on it.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, will someone make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar. All second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Murphy, seconded by Commissioner Vandermeulen. Please vote.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamone?
Yes.
And Chair Edsall.
Yes. Okay, so then that moves us to the public comment section, and this is the time on the agenda tonight, if anybody wants to speak on a, any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item tonight? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public comment, and then we'll get into our public hearing, the IPD four twelve, and the staff has a report for us.
Good evening, Chair Edsall, Commissioners. This evening, we're going to be talking about the industrial plan development permit for twelve for Fairing Capital LLC. The project is, the project applicant is Darren Emery for Fairing Capital LLC, and the project area is the forty-six point eight-eight acres shown here on the map as the Springville component. It is in the Airport North specific plan area, which is the entire area in purple. The two dealerships are proposed on the north end of the Springville component property, one of them being a hundred and fifteen square foot building and one being an eighteen thousand square foot building. And then there will be five additional industrial buildings totaling a total of five hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and forty square feet. Through a lot line adjustment, which is an administrative action that is nearly complete with the county, the three existing parcels that currently go basically long ways north to south are being realigned, and a condition of approval has been added that requires that this adjustment be recorded with the county surveyor before obtaining a grading permit. It's actually almost done, but when done, parcel one, which is the northerly parcel where the auto dealerships will be, is ten point four acres approximately, and would have a hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet of buildings on them. Parcel two is approximately thirty-one acres, and would have nearly five hundred thousand square feet of industrial buildings on them. And parcel three is five point seven five acres, which would have a single seventy-five thousand square foot building on that property. On April twenty-fourth, the city council passed Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five, which adopted an addendum to the two thousand sixteen final SEIR twenty fourteen dash eight, which this addendum evaluated up to two hundred and eighty thousand square feet of dealerships on the property and six hundred thousand square feet of industrial shell buildings. This is, this proposed intensity of development is within the scope of the addendum, so no additional environmental review is required. It is, I would like to note that what's actually being brought before you tonight, though, is actually only a hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet of dealership and about five hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of industrial shell building, so it's slightly smaller than what was evaluated by the sequence analysis. On April twenty-fourth, the city council also adopted Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, which amended the Airport North specific plan. This amendment allowed two hundred and eighteen thousand square feet of dealerships on parcel one, as shown on the previous land lot line adjustment map, which is adjacent to the US one oh one freeway and is in the research and development zone of the specific plan. It also allowed additional sign height for properties adjacent to the freeway up to thirty-five feet, no more than, and it would allow additional building height without a CUP up to fifty feet, and more with a CUP. Additional, other additional updates brought the specific plan current, because there had been numerous amendments to it, so the city took the opportunity to update the specific plan and bring it into the modern era. So, in the city council's motion that they did on April twenty-fourth, they motioned that staff limit the dealerships to the research and development zone proposed by the applicants, so in that ten acre space, or approximately two hundred and eighteen thousand square feet in approximately that ten acre space. The city council did support the project concept, although it wasn't actually being looked at at these meetings, and found that it is consistent with the Airport North specific plan as amended. The project site, again, the land use for the property, the land designation for the general plan is that it's research and development, and in the zoning, it is limited manufacturing, and in the specific plan, it is also research and development. To the north of the property, across the freeway, is the Lennar Development, a hundred and fifty-eight unit housing development that's currently under construction. To the south of the property is the airport. To the we- east of the property is a vacant parcel, where recently Costco was approved at the far east end of that. And then to the west of the property, there are limited industrial, which has got some industrial manufacturing buildings, and then further west still, there's heavy man, heavy industrial. To put this, everything into perspective, when it comes to these buildings, these black spots in the zoning map are the actual buildings that are adjacent to the property, and these range anywhere from sixty-six thousand square feet to eighty-eight thousand square feet in size, which is about as big as the building that will be on this property and about as big as the building that's in this corner. And then the Costco has been approved, again, adjacent to the property, and that is a hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet, which is actually larger than any of the proposed build, any of the individual buildings proposed tonight. Here is the site plan for the property. And then this is parcel one, that will, with the new lot line adjustment, and on parcel one will be the dealership at a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet, the dealer number two at eighteen thousand square feet. And then here is parcel two, building A, building B, building C, and then building D. And then the parcel will also have a, I'm sorry, parcel three then is down here, and it will have a building on it, which is seventy-five thousand square feet here on parcel E. Additionally, there will be a new road put through parcel two that will go from Ventura Boulevard to parcel one. That road is going to have ornamental intersections along that road. Here's a rendering that the architect has put together on how this is going to look. The access into the parcels, parcel three and parcel two will both be accessed off of Ventura Boulevard. Parcel three also has an egress into a private easement on the west side of the property. Parcel two can actually be access parcel one on the private road as well, and then there are three access locations off the north-south section of Ventura Boulevard. And then, when warranted, there is a condition of approval, a mitigation approval, that when warranted, a traffic signal would be added at the intersection here, when warranted. So when, if traffic gets to a point where there's a signal needing, being needed, then that's when the signal would go in, and that is a condition of approval. Public art, this is actually an awesome opportunity for the city to get some public art. We actually have seven buildings going in, six of them are over twenty-five thousand square feet, which is our recommended threshold for when public art is allowed. It is possible that we could go ahead and have a piece of public art here that maybe commemorates the Springville Baptist Church that used to be on the site. It's possible that we could have a very nice, large piece of public art in the central intersection plaza area of the parcel two. Not saying that we should have a giant bronze statue of Adolfo Camarillo on his horse, but... And then there would also be, we want to create a sense of place, so kind of adds the entrance into this area. The applicant has considered, they're calling this the envisioned commerce center, maybe on their signage, it's not fully decided yet, but maybe there's some artistic signage there, kind of like on the end of Springville Drive, where Lennar Homes is going in, it's going to introduce you to the Ponderosa neighborhood, so maybe there could be some sort of artistic art that would go on there. So parcel one, let's get into the dealership a little bit more. Parcel one, here are, the blue that just showed up are the setbacks, and so as you can see, every single building is well within the setbacks, the closest being the small dealership on the right, which has got, which has set back fifty-one feet, which is eleven more feet than required. Additionally, they're providing loading zones, as required by code, that are going to be done on property, so that all of the offloading of new vehicles and everything will be done on the site. Additionally, they are required to provide five hundred and fifty-one parking spaces, which includes their outdoor inventory parking and display, but they're providing nine hundred and forty-two spaces, some of which will be parked on the roof of the larger auto dealership building, and within that building, there's also going to be seventy-six service bays for vehicles being serviced. Here's the architectural, the north side of the auto dealership. I'm going to give you a little bit of zoom in on this, because it doesn't really look good in that really large picture. So as you can see, there's some ornamental features on here, they've got old Santa Barbara tile roofs, they've got tile insets, columns wrapped at the base with stone. There's mission, parapit, mission, standard kind of traditional mission parapet architecture with the curves. I do want to point out that there is this box-like feature here, that box-like feature would not actually be able to be seen from the front of the facade, because it's all the way at the back of the building. And it's just going to show up on the side elevation. On the side over here, we actually have the curved facade, starting with some articulation down here on this side, that then curves away to this nether tower element tying in this end. Again, it's got a quatrefoil, terracotta quatrefoil here, it's got terracotta insets, some other architectural features on the tower elements, arched spaces between the columns that have different colors of stucco in there. It's got a tinted glaze with anodized aluminum window frames that are in a regular pattern. All of these things I'm pointing out are considered to be design elements, both in the heritage zone, as well as in the Airport North specific plan. And then finally, for the company's branding, they've got this metal section here, which this is a low reflective etched metal facade on the front of the building here, that just is part of the branding that's the, that the dealership requires, but it also then has this nice tower element here, which has also got the old Santa Barbara tile on it. And then we have some material sample boards that hopefully you got a chance to look at prior to the meeting, that are over on the staff table. But this is going to be some tile insets, decorative tile insets in there as well. And then the architecture is three hundred and sixty degrees, so the east elevation, it does have the ramp up to the roof over here on the left, and then there are maintenance doors to get into the maintenance areas. The windows have arches over them with different colored elements, and then we've got this kind of mission-style parapet wall here with, again, set with decorative styles and some plantings down here. And then on the west elevation, we have this tower element is kind of tying off the end of the building there, before you get to the actual service area. The service area is a nice covered service area, where you'll bring your car in this direction, come out, and they'll go into the service bays. And this is that piece I was talking about, that's all the way at the back of the building, giving another architectural element to that facade. So this is what the building would look like as a rendering that the architecture, architects has provided, so we're looking to the southwest from basically the off-ramp on Springville Drive. Dealer number two, we're bringing in some of the same additional elements, where we have the tower element here with the old Santa Barbara style roof. We've gotten a little higher-end finished materials here, and that, these are porcelain panels. We've got some, again, some etched metal, that is the dealership branding, and then it's got the stucco in different colors, as well as some wood accents in the signage that's proposed. And so, and then the, the architecture goes all the way around the building as well. Moving on to the main section, the industrial campus, as I like to call it, because the Airport North specific plan does actually ask that any development in this area have a campus-like feel. So I think we've done a good job with the architect of making this have that campus-like feel. We do have, again, every building meets the setbacks on this parcel. The closest building setback is building A, which requires a forty-foot rear yard setback, and it has that forty-foot rear yard setback. The height maximum is fifty feet. They are only proposing forty-two feet. But then there are going to be architectural elements that the specific plan says aren't counted as the overall height, so there are tower elements and parapet structures that aren't counted, and so the ultimate height at the tower elements on these buildings is sixty-four feet in height. They are providing loading zones, all these loading zones are basically not visible from public streets. They are visible from the, the private street on building D, but there will be a screening wall back here, and, and dense landscaping to help screen the loading even from the private road. Again, they are required to provide six hundred and sixty-seven parking spaces for these developments. They're actually providing eight hundred and three. They're required to provide sixteen loading zones, they're providing forty-two, which the Airport North specific plan was also amended to make it to where that is the maximum number of loading zones they can provide, because we're trying to make sure that this doesn't become a distribution center, so we don't want a ton of trucks, big trucks coming in. So we actually limited the amount of loading zones that are allowed in the Airport North specific plan and on this project. So this is what those buildings would look like. All these buildings have the general concept, they're using the exact same elements, the exact same materials. So again, you have the old Santa Barbara tiles making these tower elements, every building on one corner has a tower element, they've got nice arched entrances with the architectural details. There's a tile, stone tile section here around the entryways, and then that same tile goes all the way around as a Wayne's Cup that's got a terracotta tile capping it. So, and then it's got, you know, both vertical and horizontal articulation, and this building is building A, which is the largest of the buildings. Each of the other buildings is a little bit smaller, but very, very similar in architectural style. And so as you're going west down Ventura Boulevard, and you would turn right onto the new private road, this is the view that you would get. Again, it's an architectural rendering, you can see that there's the tower elements on the industrial buildings back there. Parcel three is on the west side, or on the south side of Ventura Boulevard, and it has building E on it, which is seventy-five thousand square feet. It, again, the closest it gets to the setbacks is the forty-foot setback along Ventura Boulevard, so it does meet all the setbacks. This particular property, being close to the airport, also has to comply with the navigation easement. So if you look at the south side of the building, and we'll, well, let me, I'll get back to that in a moment, let me talk about loading first. So they are providing, again, the maximum number of loading spaces, and they also are required to provide a hundred parking spaces, they're providing a hundred and thirteen on the site. Then when it gets to the elevation, this is, the top elevation would be the elevation on Ventura Boulevard that you would see, the south elevation would be the one against the airport, and then the east and the west elevations, you know, are as you're going down Ventura Boulevard, and as you can see, there's this red dotted line on these elevations, and that is the seven-to-one slope ratio that's required for the navigation easement for the airport. So that's why the building steps back like this, so that it meets the airport requirements. Just check here. And then this building, so, again, when it comes to the loading, this building is only seventy-five thousand square feet, so the actual ratio of loading zones to square footage is actually smaller on any building that's seventy-five thousand square feet or less. So this actually has a one to ten thousand square foot loading ratio, so it will have a lot fewer loading zones than some of the other buildings. So, the ultimate idea is that this is kind of like the industrial campuses, the Airport North specific plan. So this is, again, an architectural rendering, as if you were up in Spanish Hills looking down on the property, and you can see in the foreground, we have the large dealership, the small dealership, and then we have the four kind of buildings back here that create this common intersection courtyard area, where we could have that awesome piece of public art, and then the seventh building is all the way back here in the back. So, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving IPD four twelve, subject to conditions of approval, and this action, if approved, would be final unless appealed within ten days of the date of this action.
Thank you.
And then I do want to let you know that the applicant is here, if you have any questions for the applicant as well, after staff questions.
Okay, great, thank you. You want to start down at this end, you have any questions of staff, Mr. Commissioner?
On the navigation height, if I'm saying that correctly, for building E on the south side of Ventura, then you go across the street, so you get to, like, building B. Are all of those four buildings there out of the height requirement, or does building B, and whatever's across from that, have to also be slightly lower than the ones behind it?
So the distance that it is set back from the airport is less, it makes it to where they can all be up to fifty feet in height, and actually have additional height for the architectural elements as well, because they are far enough back from the navigation easement. So the height restrict, there is a height restriction zone that has like a limit on the line, but ultimately, that navigation easement goes back all the way, and so at that one-to-seven ratio, slope ratio, all of these buildings would be within the navigation easement.
Okay. You, you had mentioned, I know you're an architectural, that the larger car dealership, the back where the parking was, it was three stories tall on that, is that all? What's on each of those floors with the parking on the top?
So on the ground floor is the eighty-five thousand square, it's eighty-five thousand square foot footprint, seventy-six service bays for servicing vehicles would be on there, and then, of course, the showroom floor and the, the floor basically of the dealership. Then there's a thirty thousand square foot mezzanine level on the second floor, and that thirty thousand foot mezzanine would be more of their administrative offices section. And then the roof, of course, is eighty-five thousand square feet of roof area that would have vehicle parking, as well as, of course, their HVAC equipment and other things like that.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if the middle floor was like additional parking for their stock of cars or something, rather than, or what use that was.
It's actually office and, yeah, office space.
Okay. I think that's all I had for you right now, thank you.
You, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, thank you. On that navigation easement for building E, on the schematic that you showed, there was, there was no tower on that, so there's no tower on building E.
There is no tower on building E, it would not fit within the navigation easement.
Okay, is there a tower on building D?
There is a tower, but again, all of the towers are central, centrally located, so a tower is here, a tower is here, a tower is here, and a tower is here. So that that would allow, you know, it kind of gives that campus feel and sort of a central, a sense of central place, and a plaza kind of feel to this central area. So that's why we had them put all the tower elements on the corners here, and so down here, the tower was not going to be sixty-seven feet, you're going to only have, you know, fifty feet in height at the parapet wall.
Okay, that sounds good. On signage, on condition, I think, a hundred and sixty-three, it's my understanding that a signage program will be coordinated through our planning director for approval, and that it will conform to amendments that were made to the industrial and, and commercial, and, and the Camerio Code, municipal code. And those amendments were made, were they made in, in conjunction with what was approved a month ago with the North specific plan amendments?
Yes, they were part of the Airport North specific plan amendment, and again, it went from allowing commercial properties with, adjacent to the freeway to have, they, to have, they have, they're allowed to have thirty-five foot high sign. If they weren't commercial, they weren't allowed to have, they were only allowed to have a twenty-five foot tall sign. We went ahead and made it to where anybody who has freeway frontage could have a thirty-foot tall sign, if they had at least a hundred and fifty feet of frontage along the freeway. So, but the sign is still, will not ever exceed thirty-five feet in height, and only for those properties directly adjacent to the freeway, with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage along the freeway.
Okay, great, and those will be permanent signs, right? There will be no inflatables, like thirty-foot, you know?
No, no, no.
Purple dinosaurs would be.
No, no video, giant video screens, no inflatables.
Bart Simpson in the sky.
It will be much like the signage that you would see at the Camerio Town Center or at the Home Depot, Edwards Theater, the Camerio Outlets, those, it's very similar to those signs, that are already in existence along the freeway.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Lamone?
Thank you very much for your detailed presentation. What route will the, like cargo be coming in as they're bringing in new stock vehicles?
Yeah, so that was the whole entire intent of the Springville interchange being built, was to service this area. So the route would be that they would take Springville Drive and the exit at Springville Drive, and then go down Springville Drive, take a right onto Ventura Boulevard, and that's how they're going to be entering the site.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had a question in our, tonight, we, we received a revised set of condition, project conditions, and just like, I couldn't, they weren't, it wasn't redlined, so what were the revisions?
Yeah, so, this was, we've kind of been pushing this project, and in the process, the applicant had asked for some additional clarity to some of the conditions, and it just took us a little while to revise, we've had a lot of, unfortunately, sick staff, so we've been a little underbanded, and it took a little while to get the conditions revised. But ultimately, they were asking for clarity on a lot of the conditions. For instance, I believe it's condition ninety-six was saying that the transformers needed to be installed prior to building permits, which is kind of, they, they pointed out that's kind of out of alignment from a standard practice for construction, so they just asked that it be that the pads for the transformers be built as part of the project prior to building permits, and that the transformers. And that the transformers themselves could later on, could come in later on. Another condition is there is a water demand mitigation fee for this property that is quite high, nearly six or nearly seven figures. And that has actually already been paid. And they just wanted that condition noted that that water demand mitigation fee had already been paid. And so, it was things like that, that they were just asking for additional clarity in the conditions. But we wanted to make sure that they were part of the record and that everybody knew that these were the conditions. Unfortunately, we didn't have time to do a redline. I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Thank you, thanks for the explanation. And then, I just had one other question, and maybe I didn't hear right. But I thought you said that there's a fifty-foot height limit along the freeway part. But you mentioned something was fifty-four feet?
Yes, so, there is the Airport North Specific Plan now allows all buildings to go to fifty feet in height. But the Airport North Specific Plan calls that the habitable height zone. So, if you go above that with articulations like parapets or tower elements that are non-habitable space, they can actually exceed that fifty feet. And so, there is, the tower elements on these central buildings, these four central buildings, the tower elements again at these four corners are actually up to sixty-four feet in height. But they're non-habitable space, it's just a tower.
And then, that height's not affected by the navigational easement at all?
No, at the, at the point where those towers are at, the height could be nearly a hundred feet tall, based on the navigation easement.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have like two more questions for staff. Reading through, one of the things I was looking for was an explanation of the lights, especially for the dealership. Can you explain, at least for everybody that's listening, what type of lighting they'll have to make sure that there isn't any reflection and stuff to the houses across the street and on up to Spanish Hills?
Yeah, so, the city, the Planning Commission, within, I believe it was within the last year, and then, later on, the City Council had, did adopt a lighting ordinance. I like to say that that lighting ordinance is all but dark-skies compliant. It doesn't ever actually mention dark-skies compliant anywhere in it. But essentially, the concept is, is that all of the light shines down onto the property. None of it would be shining up, and it can't really exceed the extents of the property lines. And so, we've asked the applicant to submit a photometric plan, which is basically a lighter, lighting design that shows where all the lights will be. And then, it shows how that light will reflect down onto the ground and make sure that we're getting enough light so that you have safety, but not so much light that it becomes glare or too bright. And so, we have that photometric plan that's going to be reviewed and approved by the city.
Okay. I didn't know if I just missed it and it was there, or I didn't see it as I was looking through. The other question I had, mentioned water supply, and there was a chart WS1, which I didn't quite understand about how the water's divided up and being that there is enough water to sustain all of these buildings. Can you explain that a little bit?
I would actually like to hand that one, because that's really a public works. Do you have a copy of the conditions, Carl?
Yeah, good evening. The water supply fees, there was previously paid on a previous entitlement. Some fees that were paid in order to comply with the ordinance related to increased water usage had to offset that. So, there's a credit on this property for that.
So, it doesn't have anything to do with actual, the amount of water ability, that there's enough water to sustain all of these buildings?
So, what the mitigation, so, it's a water demand mitigation fee that gets paid. And again, this one was nine-hundred-seventy-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, so nearly one million dollars. And that money then goes into the city's accounts for us to be able to offset the increase, the anticipated increase in water from this project, basically having sat fallow for over a decade, be able to mitigate the increased water in other locations by installing low-flow toilets, installing other devices, low, drought-tolerant irrigation, and other things that were going to help to reduce the water, to offset the water that this property will use.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
One more question.
Yes, one more.
Yeah, I appreciate the question regarding the lighting. What are the hours for the operation for lights?
There are actually no hours listed in the lighting ordinance. So, the lights could basically be on as long as the business is open. And most likely, at a dealership, the lights would stay on throughout the night for security reasons, for the police driving through. They're not going to need to be able to see if there are any police, or anybody is basically up to no good in the dealership area to protect the cars.
Okay, so now, we'll open the public hearing. And if the applicant would come forward, please?
Hello, good evening, Chair Edsel. Commissioners, staff, and members of the public. My name is Darren Embry. I'm the Vice President of Community Development for fairing the applicant on the project. First, I'd like to let the commission know that planning staff has done an outstanding job upholding the city's interests and priorities throughout the application review process. Their presentation tonight also described the project clearly and thoughtfully, so I'll be brief with a few additional comments. Camrio residents and decision-makers have long been good stewards of responsible development. And as we worked through our proposal with staff, the design standards for the auto center and the limited manufacturing buildings were clarified and refined. And specifically, as Paul mentioned, avoiding any large-scale fulfillment center-type uses to remain consistent with Camrio's vision. As intended, the Heritage Zone architectural standards are guiding this campus-style development toward the Class A-level operators that Camrio deserves. And from our local research, this appears to be the most pedestrian-oriented industrial development in the city. Additionally, what is before you this evening advances some of the major economic development goals of the city that it's planned for nearly forty years at this site. Strengthening the city's fiscal health by diversifying the city's employment and tax base with stable, higher-paying jobs at the auto center and limited manufacturing campus, assuring good-quality union jobs during construction. We're also anticipating over one-point-one million dollars in tax revenue base, in annual tax-based revenues to Camrio, as well as the project providing an estimated diffs and additional fees of between sixteen to eighteen million dollars. And that includes building out costs, some of the costs of the Springville Interchange itself. We and our partners, the owners of the auto dealerships are very excited about this opportunity. We prefer, of course, to directly invest in local communities and own the property where our dealerships, that our dealerships occupy. And it helps us become true community partners. We would love to be able to call Camrio home. And finally, for those who might not have been able to see the City Council's meeting on April twenty-fourth, their rigorous review and discussion of the Airport North Specific Plan Amendment resulted in additional constraints on the amount of auto center uses, as well as a detailed discussion of the design standards that the project is being required to meet. We're grateful for their review and the ultimate unanimous approval of the city's planning documents in advance of tonight. And so, in closing, we humbly request your vote in favor of staff's recommendation to approve the project as conditioned by staff. And we appreciate your time, and our team is here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners have a question?
I have a few, I think, maybe three, possibly. Several areas mentioned, and Owners Association being formed. So, I'm thinking this is going to be a condo-type industrial area, and you're going to own all the land. Is that correct?
That's the plan, yes.
And, but the buildings could be either leased or bought, is that correct? Or what does you, what do you foresee for these buildings?
They could be. I'm going to ask my Chief Investment Officer Brendan Kotler, who's more, come on up to join me here.
So, basically, do you, do you have a, what is your overall plan that you're going to aim for as far as leasing the buildings or selling the buildings?
So, the current plan is to lease the buildings, to keep it as a, as a single ownership structure. Maybe slightly different between the auto parcel and the industrial parcel, just given some of the dealer, the manufacturer requirements when it comes to financing. They typically want to have separate and distinct ownership structures. But Camrio's industrial base is relatively tight, and there's a lot of owner-user ask. There are a lot of business owners in this community who would like to own their own building, maybe have a smaller space that would like to expand. And so, we wouldn't want to kind of shut them out. But our, our plan is to, is to, is to hold them as one, which is why you see the parcels done as they are now. If a, if someone were to come and say they really wanted to own the building, we would certainly consider that, but that would have to be subject to a, a new mapping exercise that I believe would come back before this commission.
Okay, yeah, you would have to break them out like a unit in a condo-type thing or something, unit one, two, three, or four. On lot three or on lot two or?
Yeah, and we're going to have, there's going to be a, like a reciprocal easement agreement between the parcels one and two anyways. And then, should there ever be any sort of disjointed ownership on parcel two, there would be, it would equivalent to like a homeowners association, but it would be for, for the commercial properties. That's because one of the main things that the city and the planning staff has been really focused on is making sure that all the exterior landscape gets maintained as one. And so, that would be maintained as one, both along the main kind of boulevard that goes up the middle, that kind of shared campus-style setting, as well as all the landscape that rings the property.
And would that include all the exterior of the buildings?
Yeah, they wouldn't be allowed, no, regardless of who owns them, you can't change the exterior of the buildings without your blessing and the city's blessing. So, that would be consistent.
Okay. On Condition ninety, I don't know if this even applies, but it talked about a grease interceptor. And I'm looking at that restaurant eating area on your plans. Are you doing any preparation, food preparation in the larger dealership? Or is that going to be all food that's kind of brought in and prepared and packaged?
It has typically been a Starbucks or Starbucks-like equivalent. So, there typically isn't a required to have a grease interceptor. But this condition would apply should the, should, should the decision be to add some sort of, yeah.
Okay. And are you planning on any solar on top of the buildings or on car covers, parking covers, or anything to help defray the electric?
Yes, California Code actually requires a certain amount of solar on buildings of this size. And so, there will be both solar and battery storage to be compliant with Title twenty-two and kind of Calgary.
Okay. I think that's just for now. Thank you.
Yes, if this application is approved, what sort of project timeline are you looking for? Final design, construction?
I hesitate only in saying that this is our first time coming through this community. So, I don't want to be too, I guess, too pessimistic or optimistic when it comes to the ability to plan-check buildings and models. But we've heard great things, and we've heard that it's, that it can be done relatively quickly if you're, if you're compliant. And hopefully, that we've shown through this process that we're willing to take guidance and, and kind of listen when told. And so, the idea would be to immediately start going into construction drawings, work through the city's process with that. You know, we're already into May. Typically, you want to avoid doing grading activities during the rainy season. It's supposed to be a La Niña year, so maybe not as much rain as anticipated. But you don't want to get caught out moving dirt during rain. This site will be a net importer of dirt. This would be the way the civil engineering works out. So, I'd anticipate, assume the rest of the year for construction drawings, and then, a Q1 of next year, construction start with the goal being done by the Q3, Q4 of twenty-five.
All right, thank you. And then, for the dealerships, are there tenants that are already expected or buyers or?
Well, we're the owner of a dealership in the immediate vicinity. We will be moving that dealership to here and keeping, so, but the difference is the dealership that we own, or the dealership that we own in an adjacent community, we are the tenants. We don't own the, the blue sky, we don't own the land. And that makes it really hard to invest in kind of the Class A upgrades that the manufacturers are expecting at this point. So, this opportunity allows us to both own the land and the dealership. So, there won't be, there will be no, no dealership that we don't own on this site. This is about us bringing a dealership that we already own and a manufacturer that we already own here.
Okay, and is that for dealership one or dealership two or both?
Both, yeah, so, it is, I know it's funny that we call them different dealerships. They are, if you can imagine, a, a, the shared parent brand, but with a different level of, of quality. So, the, for instance, just as a for instance, Ford and Lincoln, or you would see something like a, like a Honda and an Acura, or Honda Lexus Toyota and Acura. It's that kind of dynamic. So, it would be a shared parent brand, but with a different kind of offering between the two.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else, oh, I'm sorry, are you, are you finished?
No, no, thank you.
Is there anybody else tonight that would like to speak on this item? And I forgot to tell you to get a speaker card, if you would. Did you already, you already did that? Okay, so, first, we have Jose Garcia.
Good evening, Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name's Jose Garcia. I'm a proud member of the Labor's International Union of North America for the past thirty-four years. My life has depended on, on commissions like you to be able to put my family's food on the table, pay our rent, pay our mortgage now for the past thirty-four years. And I bring that up because we used to just come up here and support a box. This is a project. It is amazing. I'm truly, truly excited about this. It meets everything Camrio requires. It reflects the history of Camrio, has art, has manufacturing. Why I mention manufacturing? I'm going to tell you a little story. We just went through a refrigerator thing at my house. I bought a refrigerator. I bought a real nice refrigerator. The wife had made sure that I bought her a real nice refrigerator. And it went out in eighteen months. So, I went back to the Home Depot and asked them, hey, listen, what's going on here? And she goes, well, what do you mean? And I go, well, this real expensive refrigerator went out in eighteen months. She goes, well, you got a good one. She goes, they're only warranted for a year. And I go, huh. So, knowing that manufacturing and good USA products may be coming back this way, I'm truly excited. The research of this is outstanding. The walking area, we all know what's there right now. It's, it's plain dirt. And to see this kind of project coming, and, and foremost, for it being private money and to involve the community as build, as bringing projects, we're all excited for this project. I have marine veterans here, first chancers, second chancers. We have a little bit of everything, Camrio residents here. We're here in full support of staff to bring this project to life. And please, please, support this project. And to close this, I mean, if Adolfo Camrio is too big to be on a horse, I'm not that big, and on a shedding pony, I would take a lot less space there. So, just putting it out there, it could be abstract art, you know? Just so you guys know, and I am Mexican, so, just to let you guys know. But please, please, all jokes aside, we are in full support of this project, and we ask that you push this project forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else present tonight that'd like to speak on this agenda item? I get it. I can tell who's together here. Okay, well, then, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we have an architectural review report first?
We do. We looked at it, and we looked at all the different aspects of the different sides and views from the different areas. And it meets all the requirements that we have in the Heritage Zone. We love the tile roofs and the ins and outs of the sides. Nothing was flat or straight or, it's not a big square. So, we like that. I do have to say that, I can't say we, I brought up this, I thought it was a little too much white on all the great big industrial buildings. But that can maybe be looked at later, but that's just a color thing. But the style for the architectural style, we did give it our approval.
Great, thank you. And so, are there any Commissioner comments? I'll start at this end this time.
Again, I appreciate the very complete informative reports by both the city and the applicant, and very much appreciate your comments and all of you coming out. I know that this is time to be home with your families and be having dinner. And it's always very empowering to see you all here and appreciate your, your comments. and it's always very empowering to see you all here and appreciate your, your comments.
But if he doesn't have a refrigerator that works, you have to go out and eat.
You're going out to eat dinner tonight.
How about down here, any comments, Tom?
No, I appreciate the presentation too by, by everyone. Paul, wonderful, I wish I could speak as fast as you can, but I, I can't.
Well, just let me know if it's too fast, please.
That's right. I appreciate the applicant's comments, and I very much appreciate what Mr. Garcia said. That is a big part of what we do here. We listen to public comment, and it means a lot to us, so thank you.
Yeah, I just want to really thank staff and the developers for all the work that's gone into giving us a product that is going to look nice. It's not going to be your standard auto dealership area in any way, shape, or form. It's going to have multiple uses, and it's just, is going to really add a nice look to that area. And to me, staff has really done a great job. Thank you, Paul, and the rest of the staff. And I'm looking forward to seeing what it looks like, when it's actually there. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we call for a resolution then.
Resolution number PC 2024-7, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camrio, approving a request by Fairing Capital LLC for an industrial plant development permit, IPD 412, for the construction of two automotive dealerships totaling a hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet, and five industrial buildings totaling five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and forty square feet, on three vacant lots totaling forty-six point eight eight acres in the Airport North Specific Plan within the limited manufacturing zone.
I'll move to waive further reading and vote to adopt.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Murphy to waive further reading and vote for adoption, and seconded by Commissioner Vandermeulen. We'll take a vote, please.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamont?
Yes.
And Chair Edsel?
Yes.
That passes, congratulations, thank you. Then we move to the Director's Report. Director Sanchez?
Yes, Commissioners, for the next meeting on June fourth, we have two items that are tracking for it. I know that we have two Commissioners who are not going to be present, so we'll be polling the commission as a whole to make sure that we have a quorum. If we don't have a quorum, we'll have a meeting in the following.
Okay, great, thank you. Any Commissioner comments before we adjourn?
No.
All right, we're in adjournment.